The City of Montgomery City Council meeting. Um, this evening we would like to ask TJ Wilkerson to provide the indication for us.
Lord, we come tonight with humble hearts and body as long as we come thanking you for keeping us well, keeping us whole, keeping us clothed in our right mind. We come praying not only Montgomery, the town of Montgomery, pray for Montgomery County, the state. And Lord, we've come tonight praying for the Lewis family. We thank you, Lord, for the young man who found his way back home here in Montgomery. Thank you all that you do in. But open our minds and our hearts that we may have a fruitful meeting tonight. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. All right, with that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance with the United States. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which is standing. Which is saying, one nation under God. And liberty and justice.
Texas flag?
Honor, Texas flag.
All right, Secretary Hensley, I did not receive anything for the citizens forum. Was there anything I missed?
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, then the first item of business on your agenda is the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting and July twenty first, twenty twenty, special meeting. The only item on the consent agenda this evening.
And I did send out a revision to the July fourth minutes. It's just some wording in Richard Trams. Information about the unmanned boxes. And the title to the minutes was corrected to reflect just regular meeting, not public carrying and regular meeting.
I didn't have any comments on the minute.
Then. I'll make a motion to accept approved the minutes of July fourteenth and regular meeting and July twenty first meeting with the revisions as stated.
Second.
It is submitted and seconded that we accept the approval of minutes for the July fourteenth, regular meeting and July twenty first, special meeting. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the July fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting and July twenty first, twenty twenty, special meetings, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept their approval of minutes for the July fourteen, twenty twenty, regular meeting and July twenty first, twenty twenty, special meeting.
And just to be clear, Randy's emotion was with the revision.
Yes, thank you. Consideration of possible action, next item on your agenda, number two, consideration of possible action on department reports. A city administrator's report, Richard.
All right, thank you. As we have the last few months to help avoid communication confusion, I'm going to run through most of the department reports. But we do have those city staff department heads on the line with us tonight if there's a specific question that anyone has for them. So as we go through that, you know, I think this time last month, you know, from my point of view, it looked like we were, you know, hitting a point at the pandemic. You know, that things were leveling out, maybe evening out for a bit. And since that time, obviously, you know, we've seen extensions of the public health emergency, rise of cases. What we've done here at City Hall is just make sure through our own operations, we've maintained the City Hall being fully open. You know, all staff is in their regular place. But we're being careful about how we do things. There's still a limit on people, you know, the public coming into City Hall, so we're keeping them not in large numbers. If there's something that we have to have a gathering of people, say a pre-bid meeting, we'll put them around larger tables in, in otherwise the city council chambers, keep people spread apart. But we're fully open, fully operating. We're still seeing that, you know, the numbers of people who used to come to City Hall, they're not coming in. They may be using the Dropbox, may be paying their utility bill online, contacting us through email and through telephone. But we are providing the services to the public, even if they're not coming in as frequently as they would before. We're also fully operational over in Fernland and did have a pretty good number of visitors come over there this month. That number is reported in the Public Works Report. We do require, we have staff wearing masks over there while they deal with the public and have asked the public to wear masks while they work with the staff in a guided tour. If you're just touring the grounds on your own, you know, a mask would not be required for some of those people. With regards to development, we're still seeing development occurring through the city in pretty good numbers. Both in commercial and residential construction. And while I'm talking about, I guess, residential construction, I do want to remember to mention the, we had our fourth home grant home closed this month. We just did the signing on that actually this past week. The home builder who's working on these four homes or will be working on them has already applied for the first two of the four homes. And we're expecting applications in the next week or two on the next two. In talking with representatives from the state, the plan is for this builder to build all four homes, you know, while they're out here in, at one time. I don't know that the construction will be concurrently or consecutive, you know, but the plan is that they will be, that they will be done close to similar time with each other. With regards to the, to the GLO, BGE has collected aerial photography, survey data, other information they needed. And they're completing their model at the moment. They should have the initial model results within two weeks' time and start their work on putting together alternative. Alternatives for which the grant money there is funded. So I look forward to having more detailed information to report to you by the time next month's meeting rolls around. We have the comprehensive plan that the draft view, version of that should be in council's hands next month for review. And you know, as that process continues to move forward. Behind the, or I had the development report, I also have some information and I just want to touch on this briefly. You know, on chapter three eighty development agreements. This is something that I also mentioned to the directors of the MEDC at the last meeting. And I don't intend for this to be, you know, a deep level dive, but we do have a couple of new council members. Since I've been here about fourteen, fifteen months, yeah, I don't know, you know, how involved any of the current council members were in the past. But, you know, the city does have some pretty good authority, you know, with chapter three eighty agreements. I think you're aware that, you're all aware that the city has several of them in place. With Chris Sheen for the Hills of Town Creek, you have one where the Kroger Center is and for the Shops of Montgomery. And those are the Shops of Montgomery, where we'll be preparing in the next couple of months of making the first payment on that one. I think the Kroger one is, you know, they paid through year two and so it's what we'd be calculating out year three. And the one with Chris Sheen for Hills of Town Creek, that's in year seven. One of the reasons I wanted to mention this is there is a tool that's more recently come to our attention, you know, for a direct permit. For sales tax, you know, and I think there's been some very basic discussion of that. And I just wanted to make mention of it. It is not something that the city has employed before. But if you have a large, large scale builder who's doing, you know, a lot of work, they're able to request that the state of Texas allow them to not pay the sales tax at the point of purchase. But they will make a report to the state and they will pay those sales taxes directly to the state where they designate on that report. Where the taxes are, are due for. And for the city level tax, the state will get its share, the portions above that, you know, for Montgomery area construction. If we have such an agreement with a developer at an appropriate future time, those taxes could be designated, you know, as in city paid taxes. And though that is might be something that we would use on a large project where, you know, where it's being built in Montgomery. But neither the supplier nor the home office of that developer is within the city. And so we can ensure that that would be the city receiving those additional funds. And, you know, as I said, I wasn't intending this to be a deep level discussion, but I did want to put that information out there to make sure that at least everyone on council had heard at one time. Because I'm going to be actively looking for opportunities where this might be appropriate. And if it is appropriate in the future, you know, bring that to council as an option for consideration. And before I move on from there, does anyone have any questions, you know, related to my report?
Thank you for putting that chapter three eighty development agreement post in. It was pretty clear when she said in black and white.
Absolutely, it was very nicely laid out, thank you, Richard.
You're very welcome. It's, it's, it's something that, you know, I, I'm not a stranger dealing with developers or development agreements. But I haven't actually worked through a three eighty agreement in my past, so I'm trying to educate myself. And as I've done that, I've realized, you know, everyone on council came here at a different point. And so there's different levels of understanding there. And certainly if any one of you have questions, feel free to contact me at any time. If it's something I can't answer, I'll either research it or put you in touch with somebody who can answer that question. Okay, then moving on a bit to, starting with the public works. Now, you have the written reports, just hit a couple of highlights out of their report. On the wastewater side, they replaced a five foot manhole cone section with a three foot section. You know, in order to lower the manhole lid, you know, so it can go down to grade. And that was at four ten Terra Vista Circle, you know, so that, you know, keep that from sticking too far up. In, you know, a set for culverts on Baja Street, that was for the Gulf Coast project with the homes being built down at the end of the street. Also, the contractor is mobilizing currently, you know, with regards to doing some additional work at that intersection. So to, to make it easier to make those turns on and off the street without the sharp angle that is in place there. And so that should be completed in the near future. Touching on parks and recreation, several of the light poles were painted and touched up at Cedar Bright Park where they've been having. Just the, the weather, the weather and time, the sunlight had been causing the paint to peel. As I mentioned before, Fernland Park was open and, and they recorded four hundred and eighty-one visitors and provided fifty-six tours during the month. So, so I think, I think they're definitely back at work there. And just a sign that even though people are being more cautious in many cases, people are getting out and looking for something to do. So ultimately, I was glad we reopened that park. And again, the staff there is trying to work safely with everyone as possible. With the police department, again, you have the written report. Couple of things to draw attention to. July third, there was a paragliding accident involving a fatality and that was in the field behind the Kroger store. The police department is updating their emergency alert system currently. And also I can report back, I believe there was a question last month, there was a missing person previously. That person has since been located and is safely back at home.
Great job.
On the court, the court is operating under the approved restrictions due to the COVID nineteen situation. But they are back up, they're running both in court and normal office operations. So again, you have your, you have their written report, there's not a whole lot else to report on that one. In the utility department. We, we tried to be a little more specific with the, with the revenue categories, you know, and trying to shy away from things like miscellaneous and. Categories that aren't as descriptive, especially where we have larger numbers. So you see that on there. We've audited the long-term utility arrears and we're in the process of removing them from the utility system for collections reporting. So you do see a notation there related to the auditing amounts. What we discovered there is going through those accounts is while a lot of those accounts have been closed out as old accounts. They were not closed on the appropriate timeline. You know, some of them may have been, you know, still in the system for months accumulating charges. While people had long since moved out, it's just that nobody else had moved in. And then after several months had gone by, someone finally went to the trouble to actually, you know, put them in an inactive status and begin to close out the account. But those charges became left on. And so we went through in cases like that and removed those charges. And so now we have what we feel is an accurate number reflecting what was really left on those accounts. And as you, as you can see from the differences, there could be in some cases, some pretty sizable numbers there. But what we're reporting now, we're comfortable, I guess we'll be reporting, is an accurate number in those cases. Also, on the, with the water use of the city accounts. We've changed the, while there's still three months there on the report, we've changed the way that's put there. Instead of a straight three month run, we've got the current month, you know, listed before it as the previous month. And after that is the same month from the previous year. I think that gives a little more accurate picture, you know, for you in terms of comparison rather than three consecutive months in a row. We've also put those, you know, on a chart graphically for you to just be able to visualize it in a different way and look at the numbers. It does help highlight the disparity where you have, say at Memory Park, where you have a much higher level of use than you will the other areas, you know, which is not a secret to anyone. But I, I think in looking at it this way, it helps give you a, a bit of a better picture of, of how those items are. So those are the departments I was planning to run through. Does anyone have any questions on these, either for myself or for the, the staff in those areas?
Yeah, I had one on the total revenue. A hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven. What, what all goes in there? I know the water sewer, I guess GRP, Lumstar, trash. Is there more?
Where it says utilities, is that what you're talking about, Randy?
Yeah, utility slash general fund report, June twenty twenty, kind of blue top headline.
I think you, I think you pretty well got that down. There might be one or two smaller items in there as I'm trying to mentally run through the list. But I'll, I'll go through that in detail and follow up with you here, here in a day or two there, Randy. Just to make, make sure I'm not leaving something off that list.
All right, thanks.
Hey, Richard, I got a question. The wall at the community center, I know that that is constructed quite a long time ago and the materials are hard to get. There's a gentleman that knows how to construct it. What is our plan for that wall? Is there, is there one or what does the future look like?
Yeah, well, we, we've had, had a staff member meet up there with the, the insurance on that one. And so.
Automobile insurance company that's going to pay and not our own?
But ultimately, it should be the insurer for, for that, for the person who ran into the wall. But the city is also insured, should their insurance not be suitable or fully covered for the value? So either way, the, you know, the city will be covered in that. And if necessary, our insurer will represent the city in terms of trying to get full compensation back from the automobile insurer. You know, in that area, given that we have a future roadway construction coming down there, you know, we may have some parking issues downtown. I wanted to look potentially at options that may allow us to reconstruct that wall, allow us to put some parking there at the very, on the roadside. And it may also be a consideration with roadway construction. That we may want to take some additional action to protect that wall. And since that wall was significantly damaged. There is going to be a significant amount of work to put it together. And so I wanted us to be able to look at, should we consider moving all of the wall in, which would be additional expense for the city? But protect that wall and help us with parking in that area. And that's something, that's something we haven't fully run through of what that cost would be. But it is something I wanted to, while that, while there is a big chunk of that wall missing, there's not going to be a better time to look at that than in the near future.
Mayor, we also did get a quote for electrical repairs on that wall, too. There was some electrical work involved.
Thank you for that update.
Did that answer your question in there, Mayor?
Yes, sir, it did, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? That's everything, I think, and we can move down to the next report on the agenda.
Is that Michael?
No, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. We have your, your June operations report. Go down to page three and four, we have all your district alerts listed. Once again, the majority of them are due to weather or power issues. There are a couple. That were not, namely, the leak at water plant three, the mechanical seal failed on the cooling tower pump. Which we were able to get that pulled and installed within a couple of days to, so it can continue to use well for. And then down on the, the gen, on the list, five twenty-four, we had a pump failure at lift station three. Found some issues with the impeller, keeping it from pumping, so we will get the contractor to warranty those repairs. And then we had another, another leak on water plant three on six two. There's a valve on HPT that was leaking, we're going to get that replaced. But for the most part, rest of these are our issues or, or weather. Page five, we have your daily effluent trend. So flow for the month of May, June was four point nine oh three million, daily peak was May twenty ninth at three hundred and ninety-five thousand. And your dat, your average daily flow is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which was thirty-nine and a half percent of your capacity. There was a note on there that the, the peak daily flow was not on a rain day, but come to find out, the digital rain gauge, guess it lost communication that day and there was about two inches of rain.
Yeah, about, about five hundred and fifty thousand gallons of rainwater that day in another sewer pipe.
Yeah, that would explain that.
Well, those, actually those four days, yeah.
So page six, we have your discharge limitations and your, your effluent samples are all, all samples were in compliance for the month of June. And we recorded, we recorded a total of five inches, which there was probably a total of seven total, right, Randy?
I think it wasn't quite that high, but it's highly what you showed because your instrument was out.
Okay. All right, page seven, we have your water report. We pumped a total of ten point nine six million gallons. We had a total of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand gallons of flushing and sold eleven point two one five million. And so we came out to a hundred and four percent accountability. That is a little, a little higher than average. It may have just been a timing issue due to the, due to the, the high amount of flow that we were receiving at the cleanup. So we can keep an eye on it, but nothing to be alarmed about there. In fact, we, we recently checked the GPM on well four, that one's running steady at thirteen hundred GPM, so it's reporting correctly. So we also show a total connection count of nine hundred and fifty-eight connections. Page eight, nine are supplemental charts for you. Are there any questions from council?
Yeah, the, the sold number that's on, on their report that you use to do your accountability, where do you get that from?
The sold number? We, we get that from utility billing.
Okay. Yeah, I think what, that was a month that we had overrun on days on our billing and we went back and rebuilt. I think that caused some issues there. I think your accountability from what I saw was probably like ninety-seven percent. The production was right, the sale was, was high.
And we, we went through that with Haley, Mike, myself and Haley went through it together and trying to make sure that we had everything captured as correctly as possible. So.
Yeah, I looked at beacon, I looked at the beacon numbers, the beacon number says ninety-seven point eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a beacon produced and beacon sold. Yeah, and usually that they're real close to the billing. I think it was just such a chaotic month with rebilling, it caused the issue. And I think you're, you're going to see a little bit of that for July, the opposite of that for July.
Yeah, we might just see some of it filter off next month as a direct result.
I see you took that percent off the report, huh? Percent return.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, that one was pulled off.
I noticed the missing page, but I was being polite for once.
I did have a question on your flushing, you know, every month it, it's a different ballgame. And I know you probably got a flush, people call you up and got, got, you know, discolored water or something, it's not right. Are you flushing a new, new piece of equipment, maybe? Is any of our flushing metered? I know years ago, when we had the water committee, we, we, we were trying to do some of our flushing, we were trying to put a meter, a portable meter when we did plan flushing. Do we do any of that or it's just kind of a throw down number or?
No, yeah, no, none of it's metered. There's a combination of our flushing, public works flushing and the fire department, all the numbers that are reported to us. But I don't believe any of that is metered. We try to calculate as best we can, get the closest number possible, but it is all an educated guess basically.
So the, so the fire department hydrant that we meter, we don't charge, is in this number also?
Yes.
Okay, because I think that number also is in the sold number also. Yeah, it gets reported and the sold number you get from the city, so it's double.
I, I'd have to check with Mike on if that is the, the metered number. We, we're reported from the fire department, I'm not sure if that's off of that meter.
So the, hey, Mike, the fire chief sends me a number every month and that is, the number that he sends me is the number that they are pulling from other hydrants in the city are. Anytime they have a fire or a training, training session that they put on. He sends me an estimate of how much they use at other locations throughout the city. The one hydrant meter that's there is being reported through beacon and we're not counting that on our number.
So he, he's giving you a, a, an un-metered hydrant flow, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And it's a pretty good educated guess because they have known tank quantities and his guys keep up with, you know, how many times they fill up a tank. Unless they have a fire, you know, if they have a fire, then that's just a, that's just a pretty good guess that they give.
All right. That's all I had.
All right, well, thank you all for your time.
Let's just take us to the financial report and so.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just going through some of the highlights of the financial report. Turning to page number three, your oper, your operating fund, you have about four, a little over four months reserve in there. We have a CD that's coming due on Thursday. And we are going to renew that CD for six months at the same bank, Third Coast Bank for at point seven percent, which is the highest rate we could find.
Good job.
For a six month CD, so we were going to reinvest that. The text pool rates, they have been slightly dipping still, we're keeping quite an eye on those. Richard and I have been, had discussed this before. And if it reaches a certain percent, we're going, we want to try to take action on that. So then that way, it's, because text pool is not one of those FDIC insured banks. So we want to make sure that we avoid any sort of loss. So we're going to be monitoring those panels for all of them.
Sorry, FDIC does not prevent the loss of principal due to negative. FDIC only prevents the loss due to the failure of the bank. If interest rates are negative, the principal is still going to go down over time. So if rates are negative, they're negative, the FDIC does not help you out or us out.
Right, and it, but it would, now it did say that you could lose money on those, so that's the reason why we want to monitor them.
Right, right, but we could lose money anyway, anywhere you go if the, the yield curve is inverted.
Correct. On pages, on page four, your MEDC, you have a little over two months reserve there. And in your utility, right at eleven months of reserve.
The MEDC reserve is two years of reserves, not two months.
I'm sorry, I meant two years, that's correct, sorry.
Sorry, unless something really happens. Sorry, unless something really happens between our last meeting and now.
Your next few pages for your cash flow, the only two things that I saw that would be of notice would be your PID reimbursement that you, that you paid for thirty-five thousand three seventy forty-seven. That's just an annual payment that you pay for the PID. And then the Montgomery County Commissioners Precinct One, that was asphalt material for repaving and repairing Baja, Worsom, Old Plantersville, Westway, and McGinnis for the fifty-seven thousand. Just wanted to get a little bit more description since it cut off there. And then the next few pages on your budget, we did receive the July numbers, which that'll show on your next month's report. And it was almost two hundred thirty-two thousand. So we're about, almost, we're about a little over one point eight four million per current right now in sales tax. And of course, with two months to go, we'll be, well, hopefully we'll see something. I don't know if it'll be ready before the first council meeting, but I'll, of course, monitor that. And then your three hundred six, and then there was a discussion, I remember hearing from the last council meeting regarding the FEMA money that came in. I've gone ahead and transferred that over to your general fund, and that will also show at your next month's, next council, or next, the twenty, August twenty-fifth council meeting. And then the only other thing is, is I know the debt service payments are coming up, and I'm going to go ahead and monitor, I'd say, in the next two weeks, if I don't see anything in terms of the invoices that are coming up, I'll contact them. So then that way, we have those ready to be paid. Because I know that, I think nine-one is the next bond of debt service payment. So I want to have those ready. I've got templates on me. So then that way, I have those to look over to make sure that they're going to the right banks, respectively, or the, the right bond holders, bond holders.
And we have enough money already in the debt service fund to cover the payments that are outstanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Or that are coming up? Okay, great.
And that's all I have unless you have questions.
But this might be more of a question to Richard, maybe. Could you maybe hit on the topic a little bit about the Atkins Creek refund, Richard? How did we go about getting that back? A refund from FEMA? Did we do something really good? Did they want to give us extra money?
You're referring back to the, to the money that we did receive already?
Yes, the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that they gave us.
Okay, I just want to make sure I, I'm clear on which item. Yeah. Well, that was really from a time before us with the city, so I can give you some basic. Chris may be able to elaborate more on that. But that was for expenses, you know, expenses from, Chris, wasn't, wasn't that from the Harvey event, or was that?
That's correct. So that was the repairs, regardless, that was construction and engineering, a ninety percent reimbursement for those costs that were paid out. There was no previous reimbursement request made, so everything was done at the end. And so that's what that, those funds were.
So we were out of pocket that money before, and they just reimbursed this?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Randy, that's a good example as to how long, you know, a FEMA reimbursement process really can take. You know, we, while we knew that money would be coming at some point, or at least should be coming at some point, you know, nobody knew when it was going to come until, basically, basically until it appeared, or you get the situation that's about to appear. And so it, it ends up, sometimes, you know, in our case, it arrived at a fortunate timeline while, you know, there's other issues going on around the world. But there's just no telling when it may or may not eventually show up for you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrew, it's nice to have some extra money available to be able to pay for things and not always be so stretched so that you can advance pay and, and leave it out for a long time.
Yeah. And I think that's one reason why, you know, it's good always to have a good, solid reserve, you know, good savings for, just for long-term planning and long-term items, even if it just gives you the ability to withstand an emergency.
And we had to do this with the bridge as well. Chris will remember. I mean, we were basically guaranteeing that we would provide bridge financing between the payments as they were submitted from the contractor and would pay within, I can't remember if it was thirty or sixty, regardless of when we received the money from the government.
Correct. And that one, there's multiple pots. We had the FEMA pot and the CDBG pot, so it was coordinating all those to get.
And that, I think that helped us get a better price because the contractors didn't have to finance, self-finance that the city was, was doing it.
Any other questions on the finance report? Guess you can go, Chris.
All right. Good evening, everyone. You should have a report in front of you. I'm number one, driving the Baja Road CDBG project. So this is still hanging out here. It's still with the state to get the final reimbursement money back. So it's been in their hands now for, since a few months, at least, I think since the end of March. As of the latest update we received last week, is they had approved the budget amendment that did all the shifting of funds to cover the surety costs and the, all the different pieces. And now they're just, it was on desk review for the actual allotment and sending of those funds. So there's a partial of those funds that will be to reimburse costs they've already paid, and a partial to pay cost to the contract that haven't. So hopefully that'll be coming soon, and that one can be closed off in all harbor of work. Item B, the downtown water line, we all discussed that at the last meeting. So we're raring those contracts for nearing construction. We proceed with that project. On Thursday this week, we'll receive bids for the water plant number three improvements. So next week, we're actually planning to sit down with Richard and Anthony to go over budget to have those numbers available as well. So we can talk about that going into the next year with the cost of the downtown water line and this project and everything else. And then have that at your August eleventh meeting to discuss the options. The next item, it's already been touched on, the drainage analysis. So the final study is expected by the end of September, but preliminary results here in the next few weeks. We'll have more to, more to come on that as it comes out, as Richard said. Moving over to page two, the Santry Sewer Lift Station Number One Replacement Project. We did receive another pay estimate for the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand two fifty-three fifty for the contractor. So based on that pay estimate, which was as of June twenty-ninth, they're about ninety percent complete by value and hundred and sixty percent by time. So the amount that we have in retainage is still in excess of the liquidated damages to date, all were assessed. And as of right now, he is expecting substantial completion mid-August. So he's in the process of wrapping up electrical work and coordinating with Entergy to get the electrical service set for that work.
Did we affirmatively decide that the ten percent is adequate, given that the liquidated damages has basically eaten up all of the retainage?
We, we still believe so, based on, I mean, yes, we did. Now, do I have a, you know, if there's more work to be done, we still have his bond to fall back on. So if he has performance issues with the project, we have the performance bond that he's put up with the city to call on in addition to the retainage that we're.
So the retainage doesn't use, like, to compel, like, and things like that, or?
I'm, I'm sorry, you broke up.
Yeah, sorry. It's not, the, the retainage doesn't use to, like, encourage punch lists and things like that, or we can use the bond for that, too?
No, it is to encourage the punch lists. But the other part about the punches is he doesn't get his substantial completion until those is eventually done. So his warranty period keeps on extending out until that is done. This project will have about a, you know, at the end of the project, he'll have a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand or so in retainage that's being held, plus whatever's left on the final pay estimates. So this, this ninety percent number, complete by value, is including the retainage number. And this is the value completed is ninety percent. But what's being held is actually nineteen percent. So it's ten percent retainage plus of the ninety. Move over to page three on developments. Some of the highlights, we did receive the first plan set for Hills of Town Creek, section four, and we provided comments to those last week. There's a lot of handful of comments that they're working through to address. Moon Over Montgomery, we received plans for them, and I have the final review on my desk. So I'll get those sent out tomorrow for their phase one of the first, I believe, is five cottages closer to Cleveland. Ongoing construction items, the Shosse Montgomery Public Waterline Extension. As we held a file inspection last week, and we're finalizing the punchless items for them to complete. And then the last page, page four, TexDOT and Atkins Creek, they're still proceed, planning to try to proceed in January twenty twenty-one. So we'll be working with them and the city on right-of-way acquisition for their project. They did come back. We asked the question of, you know, did y'all extend the scope of the work down to where the bulkhead is, or was? And they said if the city would pitch in approximately two point six million dollars, I think it was. So we didn't take it much further than that. So we'll be continuing with them just to figure out, to get at least the portion right at ten ninety-seven addressed, and what are we can do in the long term. Again, that's, they're not a city issue, it's not a city easement or city-owned property downstream, but obviously it has an effect on the city with the surrounding properties being essentially undevelopable. And other than that, the attachments you have are the pay estimate, just for your reference, the, the maps, as always, showing where these developments are occurring. That's it.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. If nobody has any comments, then I move to accept the departmental report as presented.
Second. It's removed and seconded that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. Item number three on your agenda, consideration of possible action to accept collections for twenty nineteen debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Tammy, Jamie Gray has provided the annual certification for the excess collections rate for debt service for the year twenty nineteen, as well as the anticipated collection rate for debt service collection for the year twenty twenty and twenty through twenty, well, twenty year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Get myself tongue-tied there. Acceptance of the certification is required annual action of the city council. Attached in there is the communication and the certification from Jamie Gray's office. And so you have that there for your review. It was their suggestion to make this an item, but, you know, I felt more comfortable making this a regular agenda item. It's really pretty much straightforward, but it's there for your review. So.
So what does the formal language need to say?
The formal language for the motion? To consider and accept the excess collections rate for twenty nineteen for debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so we don't have to have the hundred percent and zero numbers in there?
No. No, that, the way Richard described the motion is sufficient.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to accept the excess collections rate for twenty nineteen debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It is removed and seconded that we accept the collections rate for twenty nineteen debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting, of accepting the excess collections rate for twenty nineteen debt services and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I'm sorry? Say no? What's that, a no? Okay. All those, they were saying aye, all those opposed, say no. The motion carries. And we will.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
There was no nay.
It sounded like there was, but no one.
Oh, okay.
That may be what they want, sorry.
All right. So it's unanimous, motion of yes. To accept the collections rate for the twenty nineteen debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Next item of business on your agenda is item number four, consideration of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas, amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, providing a repealing clause, and a Texas clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, as I go into this, I know we've discussed a lot of this for several months. I still want to point out that, you know, discussed with the auditor was the action to take, you know, an end-of-year, a final budget correction. This is not meant to replace that. We still intend to take that action at the end of the fiscal year. But this is the action that we have discussed for the last couple of months with response primarily to the COVID nineteen situation, the public health market, the economic effect that has had. We started with every department head reviewing their budget items, working out items. That could either, that could be delayed, that could, that could just not necessarily need to be done. Try to streamline the expenditures, you know, going forward because there was just a lot of unknown, you know, in the future. You know, attached for the primary budget categories, you know, the general fund with the proposed changes highlighted. Several categories are broken out in detail for clarity. You know, the city, as discussed before, did benefit unexpectedly with the receipt of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar FEMA reimbursements to the general fund. You know, and this, fortunately for us, this occurred at the time while, while we saw reduced increases in sales tax collections. Well, this money helped us bridge the gap. It was not enough to balance the budget without making cuts to expenditures, you know, that we have done. You know, the additional revenue and expenditure, expenditure cuts did also provide us with enough additional funds that we're proposing to designate a new category to begin a long-term capital savings category for future large capital project expenditures, you know, such as construction of future elevated water tank, major upgrades to city roads and utility lines. You know, the idea I'd like to instill in budgeting going forward is that we have a long-term capital savings category, you know, that can be used in the future. You know, as mentioned before, maybe it could be used, you know, for certain emergencies. The point is to have that long-term savings there in addition to our standard reserve categories. And the information provided, the income categories are based on nine to ten months of actual data. You know, some of that data included is July, that is in progress. So it does include sales tax collection data received in the month of July. So that makes that information different than what's in your financial report, which is reported through June thirtieth. The expense categories are based on reductions discussed with department head, nine to ten months of actual data, projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. Yeah. As I said, some income and expense information was available for July, and some was estimated. As the primary issue causing this amendment is related to addressing sales tax revenue and reducing expenditures paid for, from these budget revenues, you know, staff is only recommending these changes to the general fund at this time. You know, and while I use the word, word if, you know, I do intend to be back for the general fund and the other funds with the year-end adjustment that was mentioned. You know, the information is available, and some of you may have questions. I know I've spoken to some of you individually. One, you know, a couple of large numbers I do want to, or numbers I want to address specifically on here. The franchise tax category, you're, you're looking at current available year-to-date information of over thirteen thousand. Yeah, and we're projecting ninety thousand. You know, there is a law. You know, there is a large revenue amount that, you know, at the end, you know, at the end of August and early September, you know, from Entergy, the last two years, that's been in excess of $70,000. You know, it's been on an increasing trend for the four years I've looked back. So I am confident, you know, that's a good number there. But because it's such a big jump out of what you have year-to-date, I did want to draw attention specifically to that. For the sales tax category, a couple lines down, 14600. Keep in mind, the city has a 2% sales tax. It's broken up into multiple categories. The 1% of that, we designate a sales tax. There is one half of 1% that is designated for the line below that, sales tax in lieu of property tax. There is another one half of 1% that does not appear in the general fund, goes straight to the MEDC fund. You know, one thing we've also done here with the sales tax and the sales tax and with property tax categories is there should be a two-to-one ratio there. It wasn't actually in the correct exact ratio at the time of budgeting. Originally, it has been corrected for this, which is why you see different percentages in that, in those categories for amount of change. We took that corrective action as well. One very small item, but still want to mention it, you know, kiosk revenue, a little farther down that page. None of us really here knew what kiosk revenue was. It was budgeted at $20. We haven't seen any activity for something we would do that for. We just drew that as a zero, admittedly a very minor change on otherwise a large dollar amount budget. You know, but it just struck us wrong to leave it there if we had no intention of using it. And we were trying to avoid getting carried away with attacking every category and trying lessly to attack the major ones, but that one got the better of us. You know, there's a number of categories through there. You see towards the bottom of the first page, the FEMA reimbursement at Atkins Creek that we've discussed, you know, so that has been brought in here. You know, you see, we're projecting, you know, project overall decrease of revenues from the original budget of 3.6%. You know, that of course, that would be pretty close to 10% had it not been for the FEMA reimbursement. So, you know, we certainly, you know, got that in at the right time. You know, in the expense categories, I'm not sure if there's any specific categories, you know, anyone would like to ask me about going through there. I'd be happy to take those questions if there's any specifics there. I definitely do want to address towards the bottom of that. You know, we have, you know, on the last page there, halfway down, you know, we have contract labor streets, which is a significant reduction, you know, and also significant reduction, a couple lines down, transferred capital projects. You know, at the time of budgeting, there was a large amount of future roadway, you know, projects that had been intended for a lot of repair work. We did do some of that amount, that's the 78,000 to, or well, the 73,255 figure in there. You know, we left a few thousand dollars in there if there's some road work that has to be done before the end of the fiscal year that comes up. But largely, you know, if that work wasn't being done because of the reductions and the situations that we've had, we went ahead and, you know, reflected that through, you know, the lesser expenditures. And, you know, the last of the categories we have in there, as I mentioned, transferred capital savings, that $30,000, that is what I mentioned before about beginning a long-term savings. Yeah, in the event, what we have happened towards the end of the fiscal, as we close out the fiscal year and come in for our final budget correction. I feel like generally speaking, we've tried to reflect fairly well what we believe will happen on the expenditure categories. We've tried to be conservative, at least for the most part, on the income categories, leaving out there the chance that there could be some sort of government shutdown or something else that restricts the economy. I don't want to get too far ahead on revenue projections. We've already been bitten once this year. I don't want to be bitten by that twice. So I feel if I'm going to be off on the overall figure, I'm much more likely to be off on the side of us having additional revenue at the end of the year versus being in the negative. If that's the case, in a final year-end budget correction, I would look to increase the amount of money going into the transfer to capital savings, if that money's available at that time. So with all of that said, if there's any questions, I would be happy to try to take those.
Richard, I just want to ask you, the item was 17072, the Public Works Items, budget for 20,000, projected 11,1, nothing spent yet. What type of things are in that, typically go in that number? Public Works Items.
Okay, let's, um...
Last page, about five up for the bottom.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That'll help me skim down there a bit quicker.
Ending in 72, 17072.
Yes.
Right. Thank you. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna end up, I'm gonna defer to Mike Muckeroy on that one, because this is, this is, you know, an overall category out of a larger grouping. Mike, do you recall specifically what we were originally looking for in that area?
Well, so the main purchase on that was going to be the truck, and it was going to be taken partly out of this line item and partly out of the water and sewer line item that corresponds with this.
Okay. And thank you, Mike. And for a general mention on this, you know, there was a truck purchased or budgeted for Public Works in this fiscal year. Based partly on the pandemic timeline, you know, for the manufacturer, you know, we had already replaced that, we had already placed that order before the pandemic situation set in. We were in a position that delivery, you know, was able to be laid into the next fiscal year and prove that. So we're not going to have an actual expenditure of jerseys here. So that is an example of one item that's been moved into the next fiscal year and will be accounted for then.
All right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard, I had a question about, I guess, revenues, the last one, MEDC contributions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Let me let you go ahead and finish what you're asking, and then I'll go ahead and answer.
Well, I saw what the projection was. Did they, did they contribute money to our budget so much a month or quarter?
Well, the MEDC does contribute to cover the administrative costs that are incurred on behalf of MEDC. At the time the budget was put together, the budget showed hiring a staff person that was largely, was performing MEDC-type functions and being paid for by MEDC. That person was hired later, later in the fiscal year than was originally anticipated, and they are no longer with the city. So that is the, that is the reason for the big disparity there. You know, when that person's with the city, there was a much greater transfer of contributions from the MEDC, you know, to the general fund. But without that person on staff any longer, then that amount has been reduced.
Okay. It was just MEDC contributing to staff support.
Right, right, because they were working for, essentially, essentially working as a city employee, but for MEDC purposes.
Okay, thank you.
That's your question, Randy?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Richard, I've already shared this with you. I am concerned about the fines portion of revenues not being low enough for the nine months. We're running about $22,000 a month in fines. We'll call it revenues for lack of a better term, although I don't consider it to be revenue since there's a large cost associated with it, which would mean that we'd be more likely to be at 260 rather than 300,000 for the remainder of the year for revenues.
Right, yeah, and I do recall we had that discussion.
So, I mean, that's, that's the only thing. Otherwise, I mean, I appreciate, A, we've never had such a detailed budget adjustment with so much care given and thought given to each and every item on here. I mean, I think there's, you know, it's a very big adjustment to the way that we've looked at things before. And hopefully we'll be much more, much more accurate than we have. But it's definitely different times where it pays to be detailed and not be so surprised by the outcome, because previously, at least since I've been here, revenues rise strongly. So when you're surprised, you're like, oh, yay, look at my surplus. And this is definitely not the situation that we're in right now.
Well, it's definitely easy to do this when everything is on an upward trend and just more, the amount of money coming in continues to increase. Yeah, I suppose anyone can look good when everything's up 20 and 30% on revenue. That's not the situation we're in, you know, and staff did work, you know, and I definitely commend each department head for trying to make, and making tough decisions before it ever got into my hands. And I'll be the first to say, I know this isn't going to line up perfectly with what actually happens, because there's always things that are, you know, that are different from the way they're planned, you know, and I both acknowledge your point and, you know, and that could certainly be the way it turns out there. I do believe that there, I do believe overall, you know, you know, there will be other categories that are out of line one way or another, just because those are the way things happen throughout the year. That's why you do corrections to budgets as part of the process, unanticipated things happen. You know, we all know, back in, back in September, October, we never anticipated, you know, a public health emergency coming in. And, but I think, but I do think overall, you know, this is definitely gonna, going to work out unless something so big happens to change it that we're gonna have to restructure it again. If so, we'll roll with that. You know, it's like, if council feels the, feels the need to modify the numbers here, I'm certainly open to the amendment. Otherwise, as I said earlier, it is definitely my intention to bring this back at the end of the year for corrective action, and if we need to correct some of these categories, I will be the one out there telling you, you know, that we need to change them. And if I'm off, well, I'm off. I'm a big boy, I'll admit to that.
As long as there's a public vlogging in October, I'll be okay with that.
Well, if there's a public vlogging involved, I get to pick the person with the stick,
Appreciate you and staff looking at the amount of detail y'all did to get this done.
Yes, sir.
I'm all right with passing it as is, as long as you understand, you know, my concern is $40,000 on the revenue.
I do indeed, and it's, you know, before this, before this got to council, we went back through this line by line, you know, and we had those same concerns. We, we know it's not going to be perfect, because things just never turn out the way it's planned. And so, but we do, we do think from our point of view, it's the best effort. And I'll just have to hope it doesn't end 260 on the nose like the number you just said. If it does, you can tell me, I told you.
Exactly. Then you know who will be wielding the stick.
Hey, Richard, just, give us a question, that 199 year-to-date, does that include July, or, well, that's, ends with June.
Which, where are you looking at there?
The fines, we're talking about. The 199, 199,000?
I believe that includes a partial number, well, Anthony, I'll let you answer that.
As of June.
Okay, so we've got three months instead of two then.
Yeah.
Okay, Rebecca.
So I may have a little bit of breathing room then.
I don't know, it depends on who gets to, if he's Solomon first.
Well, yeah, well, you know, he's in on the call, so I guess he'll pick, he'll, he'll have to pick whose side he wants to take on whether that number's going to be 260, 300, or somewhere in between.
Make it down by yourself.
Is it a coincidence that his name is Solomon?
I'm sure he's full of wisdom on the subject.
That's great.
I'll leave it to council to consider approval.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to move to approve, approve the suggested amendment to the City of Montgomery FY 2019, 2020 budget as presented by the city administrator.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the amended budget as suggested by the administrator. This motion's debatable, amendable, for the 2020, 2019, 2020 year. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
And that's also to adopt the ordinance?
Yes.
Sorry? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does the second include, include adopting the ordinance?
All those in favor of adopting the ordinance and amending the budget of the City of Montgomery FY 2019, 2020 budget as suggested, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will adopt the ordinance amending the City of Montgomery FY 2019, 2020 budget as suggested by the administrator. On the agenda, we have an executive session that is listed. Richard, are we to go into executive session, or what is the status of that?
I do not have a need to go into executive session. I do not yet have a reply back on the action I was asked to take by council, you know, at the last meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, then, with that, we will move down to council inquiry. Does anyone have anything? All right. Well, with the silence, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn today's council meeting.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn the city council meeting. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. It is 7:07 PM. We will adjourn this meeting. Thank y'all so much. Have a great week.
Okay.
You too.